Those are expense-based aids that will hit us after we expend them in the next year. So just like we're not getting right now, the amount that we thought we would for nineteen twenty, at the end of twenty twenty-one is when we wouldn't, when we don't see that money. And we get aid increments paid out through the year. So they would be, they would be reducing those as they come in. The way it works, we expect those revenues to come in and then we pay those monies out. Right? So, um, you know, to, to, to the point about, you know, having to borrow again, that, that would be to make potentially later in the year to make salary. And it's all about cash flow. So, you know, at a particular point in the year, you might be okay. And then another part of the year, you're not. Because all of a sudden, that twenty percent that you expect to come in doesn't come. So, you know, re- really important that everybody understands that a push needs to be made both within our state. We need to talk to legislators. We've certainly pushed that. The New York State Council of School Superintendents, I know NICE, and I know, you know, really, all the organization groups are pushing the state. And what the state's saying is pretty clear. We need the money from the federal government. So, um, we need the money from the federal government. Okay. In order for us to do what Mr. Sabo talked about this year for elementary, there were, there are certainly a couple additions. Okay? And for us to run the virtual program that we need to run. So what we're looking at adding is two elementary teachers, a, a number of district substitutes positions. And that was in, already voted on, but I want everybody to understand. Those district substitutes initially will be placed at the elementary schools. One of the luxuries that we won't have is combining classes like we have in the past when, when we don't have coverage. So we're going to start our subs there. They may be moving other places in the district, but they're going to start in our elementary schools in the morning. And, um, the, the last position I have is a technology person. We have one, besides our Director of Technology Learning, we have one technician in our district. So we're now going to have a second microcomputer specialist in the district. For us to operate the way that we need to this year, we need those people on call, moving from classroom to classroom anytime they need support to help with the, with the virtual learning, to help with the remote learning. Okay? So that, that, those, those are really important for us to make this work. A big thank you to Niagara County Emergency Services and Niagara County Department of Health. There were five representatives from those two groups that met with us yesterday afternoon. They met with, um, a group of us superintendents, some in person, some online. And we did some tabletop exercises as to what it's going to look like, you know, come September, when we get cases of COVID, which every school district will, right? Everybody knows that. How are we going to work with them? How are we going to handle it? And we were able to walk through that out of time. And I can tell you, I feel as confident as you can, you know, prior to the start of the school year, that we're going to be able to work well with the depart, with the Niagara County Department of Health on contact tracing. But when, when we get there, I won't say if, when we get there. And, um, that was a really, really important activity. I do again, thank them for taking the time out of what you can imagine. Other incredibly busy schedules right now to give us a little preparation, some preparation prior to the start of the next, this upcoming school year. So, thank you. I want to announce the, um, the formation of a new committee. It's going to be called the Equity in Education Steering Committee. That's the goal of that committee. And once the committee comes together, we may amend this goal, but is to identify equity gaps where they exist and make recommendations to fill those gaps where they exist. Specifically, I would see us focusing on poverty, event, poverty in education, race in education, digital divide, which is one that we've been certainly tackling recently. Um, and then any other additional topics for the committee. There will be something posted on our website tomorrow. For those who are interested in joining, we stayed on there, who we're looking for as far as, you know, volunteers. So if you're interested, please go to the website, take a look, and then you'll be able to let us know, um, but through an email that you're interested. Meetings will be the first, um, excuse me, the third Tuesday of every month, with the first one being September fifteenth. No, no, not at all. Well, well, the, the members will do that. The Niagara County Youth Bureau, who many of you know, provided us the opportunity to provide food to our families this, this summer, asked if they could extend it another week, and we said yes. So they extended it one more week, which we again, thank them for organizing this, for setting this up, for making this happen. It's really been important for our school community. Thank you for that. Okay. How about I do this? Any questions on any of those other topics before I get into the start of the school year and reopening? I think I have that under. Did I miss that on here? Okay. Yeah, yeah, good. Thank you. So, um, along with that twenty percent reduction is, or included in that twenty percent reduction is the pre-K program. When we heard that it was twenty percent, and maybe naively, I said, oh, okay, we have a hundred and forty-one slots. Multiply that by point eight. You get one twelve point eight. So we can have a hundred and twelve slots. Because they told us that our total allotment is a hundred and forty-one. So let's do eighty percent of that. I was wrong. The idea is this, because it's an expense-based aid, that whatever we expend in the program, they're going to give us eighty percent back. We weren't expecting as a district to spend any of our own funds on the program. In other words, we were really, the, the money passes through our program, pays for some stipended positions, and the rest goes to Bunny Bunch to run the pre-K program. So we had, um, in essence, zero dollars coming out of our budget for that program. Okay? Um, the, the grant was paying for it. What I just said to you, I wrote back late this, this afternoon about 5:00 PM in an email tonight, I said, just to confirm, just to make sure. But the email that they had sent prior led us to believe, and more importantly, you know, our Assistant Superintendent Finance, to believe that that's the case. And, and if she thinks that that's what it means, I, I probably unfortunately believe her on this one. Okay? Believe her on all of them, but for this one, I wish I didn't have to. We're going to find that out tomorrow. Okay? We'll get that back. But I think we really have to talk for a minute about what that means. Because it is not a budgetary item that we have ever and ever expected to spend money on. As a matter of fact, when this came up a couple of years ago, and we added this, we said, we would do this if it was as zero cost for the district. That's a great question. The question was, did this affect last year's? Was that, was that included in the expense-based aid back?
Yes, yes.
So they're withholding that amount as well?
Yes. So for the nineteen twenty year, it's costing us about a hundred and thirty, they're withholding right now a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars. Next year, if we go with, right now, we have a hundred and twelve students, I think. If that were the case, they would be withholding a hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. So.
Well, you know, you, you know, your, your question was asked perfectly. Because that is the frustration, right? We know how important that program is for our kids. We worked really hard to get that program in place for our kids. And now, I'll just call it a lack of action, puts us in a place where we have to make a decision not knowing about the funding. And, you know, it's the nineteenth of August. Their, their program is expected to start when ours does, September eighth. So, not to mention, certainly at that age, people are counting on the education that they get in a, in a pre-K program that is supported by a school district because they expect it to be quality education. But they're also kind of counting on it for childcare. And those families haven't gone someplace else for that childcare. And I think many of you probably know childcare is hard to come by right now. Finding spots in centers. So we have a hundred and ten, I think is the number of people who are currently signed up. We all said, come on, we have a hundred and forty-one slots. And now they're saying, well, no, you, you're getting eighty percent of that funding. So, um. They're withholding, they're, yep, they're holding back twenty percent of that. That's exactly right. It's an F, all expense-based aid for right now. Can I, can I tell you what I would recommend? And know that this is coming completely off the cuff as you were just saying that. I think what I would recommend is we say that we're going to, um, at this point, do it for the first semester. Right? Knowing that the hit is still sixty-five thousand dollars, six, seventy thousand dollars, suppose one thirty-something, right? But that, they've made that commitment, heck, we rightfully so, made that commitment to them with the program. But that, if we don't see that funding, that halfway through the year, we would say, we're going to have to pull it. And I think we don't want to, we want to set a date that we make that decision by to give them plenty of notice, maybe ten weeks. So at the end of the ten, first ten weeks of school, we make a decision at that point. If the funding is not here, we say we, we make a decision about the second semester. Well, we're, we're in it, right? In essence, we're letting them know now, but we'd be letting them know ten weeks in advance that they're going to have to find something else for the second semester. Correct. That is exactly right.
I hope so.
Well, I, I hope that everybody listening sends an email, picks up their phone tomorrow. We have a hundred and ten in our district alone. They should make one phone call. I think it will go a long way. It would push at least our state legislators, or, or, excuse me, our, I wouldn't make them to the state. It would, it would be our, our senators representing our state, right? In the Senate. That's where my phone calls would be. Because they need to get back in session and act on this. Because it's, um, it's serious business for everybody.
This is just not pre-K. This is everything.
Well. Ab- absolutely right. I mean, quite frankly, if we continue to see those things happening, there might be decisions we have to make about a second semester. Right? For, for other programs. It's, it's, it's significant, significant money. And there are districts in our state who have a much, much higher percentage of their expenditure budget is state aid. And there are districts that have very low amounts of state aid who are, who are impacted by this a lot less. Right? Um, because of their aid ratios. You know, it's a significant hit to our district. That, that, that's right. I mean, you know, when, when you think of it that way, the, there's been such a push for helping with childcare. And think about what this does throughout New York State for families who are counting on that in just a few weeks. Right?
Just so everybody understands, we took a hit right from the start. They didn't, they didn't give us any more funding. So, I mean, this is like, this is a major hit.
Jason touched on it. They want to change the educational system in the state. And I think the only way to do it is to fund it. And blame it on, you can blame it on COVID, which definitely had a big impact. But they want, they want to change.
If, I, I don't think so. If the group right now says, let's, let's wait, let's make a decision at ten weeks. And at the worst, we're taking a sixty-seven thousand dollar hit. I know that, um, I know, I know. But I, I just, I, I think, I think it's the best thing for us to do because families have committed. You know, and, and so have we. And rightfully so. No, because they really have laid it out there. You know, you, you decide what you need to do with your program now, is really what they've said. Good, great question. My, my, yeah, my recommendation is to, because that eighty percent number, let, we cap it at one-twelve. Not that that's really how this is working, but we're at one-ten right now. It would allow two more. We've certainly had it open for a long time for people to get into the program. So I think I'd be very coupled with that. We're at one-twelve right now. So we hit our one-twelve number. So anybody else is waitlisted. If we find out that the, the, the funding's there, we can go all the way up to one-forty-one. But we're capping it at the number that we're at today. Great question. That, that was the question right away. And my first thought was, what if we reduce it? It doesn't, it doesn't really help. Because whatever we, whatever we bring in and whatever we pay out, we're only going to get eighty percent of it. Sure, if that amount came down, what I'd be worried about is the people that would be working there would say, we can't, we can't do it. We can't afford to do it for this amount, for these number of classes, right? And they've, of course, locked people into certain amounts. But i- i- it's a good point. It was the fir- first thing I said was, can we do it? Point is, whatever we, whatever we pay, they're only giving us eighty percent back. I, I think, I think we can talk to them about it, absolutely. And this, again, was very fresh today. So, we, we, we haven't had that conversation. Anything else on any of those items before I get into reopening? I know those are, those are some, certainly some heavy things for, for everyone. Okay. The schedule and the plan for reopening. An email went out last Friday, and I talked a little bit about the shift. And I just want to talk about this for a minute so everybody understands. We initially surveyed our school community, um, early, maybe second week of July, somewhere around there, asking if virtual was an option or was there an interest? Excuse me. When we did that, district-wide, the response was about thirty-three percent. So one out of every three said they wanted virtual. We put together a plan based on that. We shared that plan. When we did, we then said, okay, you see the plan. Now, tell us what, what you want. Kind of lock yourself in, um, fill in the commitment forms. Great response rate. Thank you, parents. When those numbers came back, we're around twenty percent saying that they wanted virtual. Without getting into a lot of details, there's a significant shift that thirteen percent, let's say, at a secondary, on a secondary schedule, especially a high school schedule, when it comes to what electives are then available. So, and, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But understand that that thirteen percent shift certainly impacted our planning. Okay? So let, let me talk a little bit about, uh, elementary first. With those two elementary teachers that were voted on tonight to add, and with utilizing some of our other positions that are specialists normally in the district, we're able to still offer in-person education every day after the second week of school. Or if you remember, we were starting in the hybrid model at elementary. So just as we rolled out that plan, we're going to be able to do that at the elementary level. Uh, I, I want to thank everybody, there's just too many people to name, involved in all the work to kind of make those things happen in the board for adding a couple of teachers to make that happen. We're able to do that with class sizes at fifteen or below, with social distancing in all of those rooms. I want you to understand, because I know people want to compare districts, and the reason we're able to do that has as much to do with space as anything else. In other words, because we have extra classrooms, we can move our teachers and thin out the number of students in classes to make social distancing work. If all of our rooms were filled and we didn't have the space, this wouldn't be an option for us. Okay? So, you know, before people compare, geez, you know, you could do it here, but why can't? I need people to understand that that's really important, that we're, we're able to do it mainly because of space. So that's elementary. Elementary staying as we put in the plan. We will be sending out the schedule of that first week, ABs, probably by the end of the week, if not early next week, what that looks like. Okay? Now let's talk about secondary. Secondary, initially, we were looking at a model, and this is what we put in the plan, to provide a separate virtual school. If we provide a separate virtual program like we are for the elementary, if we did that at the secondary, many of our students, that twenty percent, would not have an opportunity to participate in many of our electives. Now, I know I stood here July twenty-ninth, I think was our meeting, and said, if you go virtual, you can expect that you're not going to get all the electives. Okay? We never promised all the electives. That said, the number of electives that we wouldn't be able to offer because of that shift from the thirty-three to the twenty is too uncomfortable, I think, for everybody. So we said, how can we do this differently instead? And we looked at a few different models. I want to thank about a dozen teachers who came in today. We did a demo of looking at a way to provide this in a different way. We're going to finalize that tomorrow. We have a, a meeting with the members of our continuity of learning team, who are, who are the secondary people tomorrow morning. And then we will meet with our, all of our teachers tomorrow afternoon. But we, we are going to finalize that tomorrow. And then we will share it out. But we're really looking at a way to provide more, if not all electives, to all of our kids who are in that twenty percent. Okay? It's really important that everybody understands that as a collective group, we have one goal. How can we do what's best for all of our students? Knowing that it'll be different for some of our students. Okay? So how can we do that the best way? And it's, it's first and foremost on all of our minds every time we make these decisions. There were probably a lot of different ways to do a lot of these things that we'd be done making our decisions already. We want to make sure that we get it right the best that we can for as many students as we can. So, um, that said, we know that today's August nineteenth. We know that, that Friday is the twenty-first. Our goal was to, had to have this wrapped up by the twenty-first. So we will. We'll, we'll, we'll have a plan out, um, and so parents can, can see what that is. But again, our goal is to provide more electives, if not all electives, to all of our students. Co- COVID was not caused by any of our families or any of our kids. I don't want any of them to feel like this was, you know, on them. So we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can come up with. I think we probably have a pretty good plan. We got great feedback today from, from some of our teachers who helped, so. So we'll finalize that tomorrow. The, um, transportation part of that survey that went out to families, we are counting on families who filled out those commitment forms, who said that they were able to drive, to drive their children. Okay? As we put together our bus routes and our bus schedules, our transportation department will be taking, and they're already working on it, taking those students out. Okay? Really, it's, if, if that changed, let's, uh, uh, let's just throw this out. If a hundred percent of our parents all of a sudden said, I need you to drive, we could not offer every day at our elementary level. Okay? The fam, the, the, the transportation piece, the fact that fifty percent said, yeah, we can do this, lessen the number of kids on buses so that we can make that happen. So I want to thank all of our families. I know that it's probably, it was an inconvenience for them to, to, to agree to it, to say it. We need them to stay committed to that for this, this to work. Yep.
So right now, it's, it's safe to say that there are two basic pieces to this. Um, elementary is the same as the initial plan that we shared. They're going to be going, uh, not the hybrid. There are people that, they know there's a rumor out there that we've got too many people that decided they're going to come in. That's not the case. So what we presented has not changed. So we're, they're coming in every day minus the first two weeks. You know, so it's after the first two weeks.
That's correct.
All the students are coming in every day. In those first two weeks, if your alphabet was A and K, your last name, that's your A-day person. Alphabet's E is a B-day person.
Correct.
So that, that only affects elementary for the first two weeks of the A and B. Otherwise, after that point, they're just all coming in if you said you're coming in. And the rest of virtual have actual separate teachers for virtual in the elementary level.
That's correct.
All right. And then it's, so you could say technically, secondary really has, there's no change in, um, in attendance designation. Both it said that they're a contented person or a still person, both that are virtual or still virtual. Really changed it there just had to be, I'd say, is really just semantics of what it will, how will we deliver here.
Correct.
So parents can count on that, this, you know, if you're going every other day.
We're, we're looking at for the, for the course of the year, where, where we said, I think, first semester for guaranteeing virtual. But if you're virtual, you can stay that way. And that we're looking at an, at an every-other-day model, correct?
So again, did that broken down the same way with A and K?
We would, we would be doing that. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So again, it really didn't change how much you.
No, no. What, what, what we're looking at, though, is how we provide that AB and how we provide it to both groups. That's what we're looking at. Both the virtual and the, the in-person.
Then finally, I also, people ask questions like they're happy to drive their child or if they're kind of taking a bus. At this point, if you said on the survey that you are, you would be willing to drive your child, assuming you're driving your child and with your children, your, your name, your route for the bus. And you said that you need a bus transportation. And you said that you need bus transportation, you're going, you're going to be on a bus.
Correct.
And that bus transportation will be provided for. So at this point, changes to that, that should be locked into my review in that survey.
Talking about Schedule A and B, right? I know we were talking about alphabet. What was it from? What was that?
It's A to K and L to Z. A to K, L to Z.
He has a child in the same.
So if there's somebody in the same family with a different last name, they're going to make those accommodations? Only if they're in the same family?
Only if they're in the same family.
Anything else before I go?
No, I just want to clarify, this is one of the main questions that people come up with. And I want to use it. And I want to assure people, there's no point in those plans.
Correct.
Also, if you're planning going to high school and attending high school in person.
We will still have a virtual model for people who chose virtual. We will still have an every-other-day-for model of hybrid, which is where we're starting for the, at the secondary level. That's right.
One question. In the next couple of years, we've been off short, question. With these numbers projections, are we even being the same level? Or we have some of the?
I think we'll be lucky if we're in the same, that we're in the same position we've been in the past, right? Well, yeah, well, I guess I think that's where we'll probably end up, right? You know, so putting, you know, putting in perspective, right? If we have, let's use the elementary as an example. If, what, five times six? What about fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred, right? Isn't that where we're at? Two fifty, two fifty grade levels of five hundred times, so about fifteen hundred kids, right? So of those fifteen hundred, we know that about twenty percent, a little higher at the elementary, but about twenty percent are not going to be there. So, you know, you take about three hundred off of that, so now you're at twelve hundred. Of those twelve hundred, you subtract about six hundred because of half the people said that they were going to drive their kids in. So we have to get about six hundred kids on buses that before at that level, we were getting fifteen hundred on. So, you know, the math of that works. Family members will have to be sitting in the same seats. Will we have an additional run here or there? We're just not, that's not finalized yet, but the math works, so. But if you were also making the point that if you're out there and are interested in driving bus, please give us a call. We're always taking those calls.
And you get seminars, it works out.
We did get, we did get, how many drivers? Two drivers.
Yeah.
And we had one retire tonight, so we're plus one. Hey, if that keeps going, if every time we get two, we're good. Okay. So a couple other COVID-related topics. One, and this was sent out last Friday, or the link was sent to it. There's a five-page document that is on the district website. It was put together with Niagara County Department of Health and districts. The, it is primarily about testing and contact tracing. I just want to be really clear that schools are not testing. I know there was some confusion about that a couple of weeks ago. Schools are not contact tracing. Schools will work with the county health department when there are cases. So with the contact tracing, we will also work with them when we have concerns about, like, attendance numbers, you know, and that sort of thing. I'll tell you, one of the things that we're looking at is finalizing with the superintendents, a percent of our population not in attendance based on what our usual average daily attendance is, and using that number as the number that we would make a decision on schools being open, okay? So we started that conversation in our tabletops yesterday. We will finalize that, and we'll have a number that I'll share with all of you. We think it's important for everybody to have a similar number. What I would say to you, though, is I believe that that percent will be based on what your average daily attendance is. And here's what I mean. If a school district has an average daily attendance rate of ninety-five percent, and we said that if ten percent of our students are not showing up because of illness, it wouldn't be ten percent from a hundred, because that would mean it was just a change of five percent. Got it? That it would be, if it was ten percent, if our normal daily attendance rate's ninety-five, that if on a day we get eighty-five, now we're going to begin to look at the trends. And if we have a couple of days in a row of that, on day one, we're going to give a call, if that's the number we use, to our county health department, say, hey, here's where we're at. What do you think? What are the trends that you're seeing? Here's the trends we're seeing. And just maybe it's just our one school. Okay, let's hold, let's see what it says the next day. And maybe we get day two, and that trend is the same, we say, we might need to close. How long? We'll talk about it. What are those percentages? But we're going to work on that. We're going to have a systematic way of doing that and responding, okay? The, because of those documents, I know that we certainly had a few people who had some additional questions. Because of that, I'm interested, and I want to share with the board, in opening up only from people who chose the regular to virtual for probably a couple-day period. And I want your feedback on that. But we had people lock in, because I know that was an addition. And, you know, people, I've said this before, everybody feels differently about this. Even people who feel almost the same about it feel differently about this, okay? About COVID. So, because we had, I think, some people who saw that, and there were some responses to that, if their interest was to move from the in-person regular program, let's call it the regular program, to completely virtual, I would be interested in opening that window for a day or two, okay? The reality is, we want people who want to be here when the school year starts, right? Their anxiety levels are different for different people. So, we know we had them locked in, but I just was interested in your feedback on that.
I know I discussed this point superintendently. I think I could, I agree with you in this sense of. There are really people out there right now who see that twenty percent number and are saying, oh my God, I should have chosen virtual. That's, I think that's the key thing to do. No, that's not affecting us. And that's the key thing, keep reminding people. We are not changing our hybrid model. We're not changing virtual because of that twenty percent.
Correct.
It's only thirty-three. But there are still parents out there who might, if I had a law, who said, okay, I can't process that twenty percent. I think it's too much. I better keep my child at home. I think it's a good idea to give a two-day window. So say it that way to people, that this is not changing anything in the plan. It's just giving you the option to go to virtual if you're not going to.
And we can't, here's what we can't do. We can't change the in-person work, that those schedules are being set. We can't change the regular program. So it would only be the other way. And I think, whether it be the twenty percent or these documents, you know, some people who, there hasn't been a lot, but there's been some comments, you know, just about, different people have different concerns about contact tracing and those sort of things. If, after what they heard from me now, and what they've read, their comfort level with that piece, that they still have anxiety with that, I think that the answer would be.
So you're saying, open the first two days of school?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, open it right now. Oh, no, no, thank you for clarifying. That we would open it up, I'd probably open it up when we put, I want to send, we're going to send a communication out on Friday. We would include that in that communication on Friday. We give them Friday and Monday. We'd probably say, close the business on Monday. If this was something you want to do, you need to contact your building principal, who have all the information on all of their individual kids. And if you were to make the move, this is your shot. But that'd be my recommendation.
Just a question.
Yep.
So if we're going to go from the in-house to virtual, I know what was the ten-week interval. But if it's beneficial to the district as a whole, would it be that much of a problem for us scheduling to not hold until then ten weeks? Only go from school to virtual? That's still not.
Yeah, it's an absolute nightmare. Absolute nightmare, yeah, jumping back and forth, different teachers. They have to lock in. It's just, you know, it's opening that window for people if they want to make that move to virtual. Good question. At seven weeks, at the seven-week mark, we're going to ask them about the next. And what we said is we were guaranteeing virtual for half the year. That was, I think, the optimistic side saying, boy, wouldn't it be great if a vaccine came? And the second half of the year, everybody could be back here in full person. Or there's no cases, and everybody could be back here in full person. Makes sense?
The other part that I asked the NSPD about was that, is, it's going to have to be finalized in the county, but flow chart for the charting of the classes, there's a, if students have home capabilities or students have home capabilities. I asked the NSPD about the processes of coming back in now. It's a little different than before, if you want to send off from mom and dad, you know, right away the next day.
So, as it stands right now, and this is in the five-page document. And we have flow charts that we're just waiting to post because the New York State Health Department is allegedly going to make an adjustment. We'll see. Meaning this, as of right now, the way that the Niagara County document is written, a student needs to be symptom-free, have a note from a medical provider, and a COVID, negative COVID test. They need to have all three of those things, okay? The CDC guidance does not require all of those three things. It's an or, not an and, okay? So, we're, there are a few counties in New York State who have changed to the or. I would say in spite of the New York State Department of Health not making that official change yet, but because of dialogue that happened. If and when that change takes place, we will let everybody know. Honestly, I, let me give you this example, because I think this will help people understand it. So, COVID symptoms, one of them is cough. One of them is shortness of breath. If a student goes down during the COVID crisis to our nurse and has those two symptoms, the nurse will follow appropriate action protocols. And as part of that, send them to their medical, recommend they go to their medical provider. If their medical provider, who, let's say, has been their medical provider their entire lives, and that doctor says, Johnny has asthma, and that's what it is, puts that in writing, the way it stands right now, unless they also had a negative test, we couldn't bring Johnny back. So.
Unless they go through a physical.
It's an and. It's an and. So, having the or, so that they would only need that medical note from their doctor, and let's face it, you know, the medical professionals, they're not going to send somebody back to us if they think they have symptoms of COVID, right? We trust their medical opinions all the time. That's why we go to those particular doctors. That's why we go to mine. Trust their opinion. So, we've always trusted them to write kids back into school regardless of the ailment. And the CDC guidelines still allow us for that. We're expecting that change to be made. If that change isn't made, students who had, who were out simply because of what would have been asthmatic conditions, that their doctor said that that's what they are, they'd have to wait for their test. Now, average times can be five, seven days, right? In our area right now, that's how long they potentially have to wait. So, we're hoping, expecting that that language will change. But we will not, and I'm not going to put out the flow chart with the and so people see it and then go, oh, wait, now there's an or. It's a very, the flow chart's great for people to follow, great to look at. It's an easy guide for, quite frankly, us to utilize. It was developed with the health department. They were a huge part of it. Mr. Stack did a lot of work with them to create this, and it's something that all of our districts are able to use. So we've withheld putting that out until, because we believe it's going to change the or.
But either it's an and or, the key change is if it's the or, it's in the home state. You've got to be that, you know, you're not going to come home every day. It has to be a doctor's note.
Correct. It could only, I'll say it this way, it could only be a doctor's note. Because that's the or, that's better than the and.
But I'm saying, you guys, before, our parents keep it shut off.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So that is an important point, that if they show those symptoms and they're told they need to go get a doctor's note, and let's take the testing out for a minute, they will need to get that doctor's note if they've had COVID symptoms before they can come back. Good point.
That's what he said was trying to make a difference.
Absolutely.
Before, you know, mom and dad could just say, I expect all of us, you know, another day, it's fine, like, it's better now. You know, that note, mom and dad, no longer, it's got to be a doctor's note.
Well, if that holds true, that's a more positive development for us than we thought.
Correct, absolutely. And that's why we're holding out, hoping that, 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 that's why we're holding out, hoping that flow chart can change. Correct, right now, it will be and. Yeah, no, great, great question. The question was about rapid testing, and they, I think everywhere is looking for those quicker, the quick turnaround tests. Unfortunately, what I think has happened nationwide, excuse me, is that during this pandemic, when cases increase somewhere, the people that are in the certain states that have less cases, those testing sites get shipped elsewhere. So in our county, we formally have, at one point, we had thirteen testing centers in our county. Now we have seven, seven or eight. So, you know, that's significant. And I think that that's impacted the turnaround times. At one point, what we were told by the department, there's been times when it's two days. So it might be two days today because they've had, fill in the blank, number of people. And now tomorrow, for no real apparent reason, the numbers shoot up, and now it's a five-day turnaround. Because those tests are going to the same place, same labs are trying to process them. So, and I think we can all expect that there's going to be increased testing once the school year starts, right? Also, on the link from the health department, are those sites? And the nice part about the link is, as those sites change, the link goes to the county health department. So as testing sites change, as maybe the requirements at those testing sites change, those things will be repopulated on our website, and of course, which is coming from the Niagara County Health Department site. Right now, those sites, none of, currently, none of our sites require medical notes to get tested. They all require a call ahead, okay? Anything else on the testing, tracing that I can answer? Mask breaks in classrooms. What we, so that everybody knows, we will have a prescribed mask break plan. In talking with county health department, one of the recommendations was, and I think it's a good one, is not to have everybody have their break at the same time. So we're probably looking at like nine, ten-minute breaks that would be divided up in the class so that if I'm sitting next to somebody and these two have their break right now, I would have my mask on. And whenever I take mine off, they would have theirs on, okay? And I thought that was a really good recommendation from the health department. We will make sure that that's prescribed, part of what we instruct our teachers at the beginning of the year, so that everybody's doing that the same way. The last thing we want, and you can all imagine this, anybody who's reasonable can imagine this. We don't want, you know, one teacher gave, you know, a seven-minute break, and somebody else gave a nine, and, you know, we're getting a phone call about that. You know, we all need to be really flexible with this. But we're going to do our best to give it in a prescribed way so our teachers can do it in a fair and equitable way, so that they're not putting in a. so our teachers can do it in a fair and equitable way, so that they're not put in a position, you know, to be called out for something, for something like that.
Again, just on the just want to encourage the administration just to make sure and look at, you know, the governor's executive order, they got to state that. To make sure that evidence is aligned with those things and not ask for any more burdensome. And I think it often, not, that's what gets said, is that the mask requirement, that the holiday. That's explicit. Executive Board and State that, even along the lines, State that mentions physical and mental health issues. So just that, please, aware of that, like that.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And students would, or staff members, we have to bring medical notes, we go through our school physician on those and perhaps, you know, our legal counsel on those. That's a good point. Other questions? Other questions about reopening that I didn't answer in my long diatribe, and I apologize.
I know one thing that we can bring up as a possibility this year. That's just what, just the case. Obviously, that was massive comparison, but, oh my God, it's seventy-four of our town middle school, which is a hundred and seventy degrees. Our sun, what if it was central area and, you know, what could we, what could we do with the heat? Wear masks and everything else. Possibility is that, I think all the superintendents discussed this.
It's it's very possible that because of the, you know, the wearing of masks, that we would get a day where it was too hot for kids to come in. One of the benefits of the shift in technology is that we could very likely make that a remote day and not lose it as a day of instruction. So it's a possibility. I'm expecting, I'm hearing it's been one of the best summers on record, but it's going to be a very cool September. Right? Farmer's Almanac. I don't know, I really don't. But, you know, certainly something I'm looking at.
Any other questions that you would clarify, if you heard public that asked you to clarify? I know that there will be a lot of questions that will be dealt with what is your orientation going to look like? What's sixth grade, what's the ninth grade orientation going to look like?
All, yep, that's a good, good question. All of our orientations will be virtual. We won't be bringing large groups in. Again, one of the most important things that we do this fall is avoid large congregations. And everybody knows the challenge that we're going to have at that in high school as it is. So we're going to avoid any other large congregations. So those will be done virtually.
All right, we'll wrap up these comments right now. We don't have anything to report to the board. Anybody have a board discussion this time? I know the board has sent out to you, we asked you about this convention, convention. If you can give that back to her as soon as possible.
September thirteenth is the deadline for getting the lower rate.
What was the deadline?
The deadline is September thirteenth for getting us in at the lower rate.
And if it's still something that's of interest, we could certainly get that kind of piped in here for those who want to join this way and let, if you have a different way that you need to join, you can certainly do that. Because the conference this year is completely virtual. And it's over two different weekends, the way that they have it stretched out this year, right? Correct? I think so. They have something on the second weekend even, I think so.
I thought that would be good if we don't have it in here. It would be here, the arbitrary, you know, that would be the top product that you're there. Again, I would present that vote to, it's going to teach a lesson to the graders.
Steve, what's the actual date of the conference? Maureen. What, is it in October?
It is October.
It was originally just the last weekend, October. It did spread over to weekend.
I just saw that, yeah.
So I wanted to say thirty-first, we're doing the thirty-first as the first meeting. And then the first meeting, we can elaborate.
Keep going on.
I can send it to you.
No, you can, I'll be out of time mostly in October, I don't know, so you can cancel.
Says October twenty, the twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth.
That's right. Yep. Yep. That's right, October twentieth to the twenty-second, October twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth. Very good, thanks.
Okay, enable this sign. Any business? All the comments, there's two questions that came through that I don't know. With clarification, these good. So there's no change, there's no change, I assume we'll go, well, I think what she meant to say is there's no change, I assume we'll not go to fully remote at this point? Correct. Toward the whole thing, go fully remote. It's all you do until the in-person and the
Correct, we're looking at the phase-in part of that, so that's the output. But no, we're going to have in, we're going to have in-person as part of our regular program at the high school. And we're going to have a virtual component still for people who want them.
And that's the thing that we have not discussed, you know, the numbers coming in, that he's the same. We have not discussed at all changing our initial plan of, you know, the elementary being in-person and virtual and the secondary being hybrid. There's been no talk about going all virtual numbers or anything. Then, has the ventilation system been updated in all school buildings in the district as for Governor Holmes mandated? As a, I believe that we discussed that last time, that we went to the highest possible that they are able to
Correct.
They, you said they were not filters at the time.
They're, but they're different numbers for different units. So if you put a filter that's not made for a particular unit, in that unit, it's going to stop the unit from working. And the goal of more airflow is the opposite's going to happen. So they are able to, and they are, when we are working with our subcontractors on increasing the airflow in all of our classrooms. And we're using the highest recommended filters for each of our units.
All right, are there any questions that come in? Or remember, I'm just a question. All right, I just again want to thank the staff, I mean, SRT, the teachers, the administrators. They've done a phenomenal job throughout these, these planning and getting things prepared since, you know, the opening plan started. I just want to, this is a line out tax. I also want to thank the public for being patient with us, you know, it's, I know that some people were not happy that our survey come out. We rolled this in all districts, so they're reasonable. You know, when you're planning on this many people returning and regular to get their program in, that we need a lot, we need an extra week to get our plan fully implemented, the schedules going, schedules are coming, you know, all the information is coming, we need a couple more days to patients, but that really needs to go out there so that we can make sure that it is finalized, everything is physical. So and I thank Superintendent and his staff for all of this. And again, you leave the people that are outside of us, probably, again, Stacey, who has already knew a few and worked through things because initially, and I know in our discussion a couple of weeks ago, we considered, with these decisions that the Health Department is making, not making, you know, in the beginning, how is any school to stay there? Because there is no possible way with the district, and they have worked really well in understanding and supporting the school's work, this is how things are. And I thank them for all the time they spend.
I guess everybody should understand that this is really a big impact on the school district with the dollars that we are losing. Really look out to your senators, voice your opinion. I mean, it's at this time, we really need more voices heard because the impact that's going to come to the school is not very good. If we don't get something taken care of where we're giving this money that we should have gotten. And like I said before, we've already took a reduction in, from the state in the beginning of this year. So I mean, it's compounded right now and it's, it's not very good business-wise if you look at it, the direction we're going. And I'd hate to see anything get cut. And so we really need voices heard.
And you know, we, we had mentioned this, we just had a notebook meeting last week. And I work in school association, I'm at Akron. And that was one of our concerns, when is this going to actually happen? Is it going to happen? Because initially, the state wasn't releasing the budget for it. You know, they were, they were going with all of which, I mean, everyone was just like, oh, they're going to simply answer that. There's just no pre-gate on the state, you don't release the funds, you know, there's no way of coming up with, you know, a billion dollars for a district for a program when budget was set two months ago. Waiting for people further than because of current report. So they released the funds and now, I received a couple of messages from board presidents and other figures. So they're like, oh yeah, so they released the funds, just take it back from us. That's, that's nice, that's very good. Say, you gave them money, we have to take care of that. We are, coming up on the thirty-first, the board presidents, these two intend to be in a meeting to discuss these issues. And then, a lot of this, this communication piece of, it would be hard for states to get back, extract and plan just education, but also now that the, the Senate, House, in getting that federal program. I know the board president, we met two weeks ago and it was just, you know, it was nice to be able to let loose to the board presidents how these issues facing education, especially funding, and it is, you know, our district is facing some parallels. I know that you mentioned that, so this is a factor in all the others. We talked about the discrepancy of downstate versus up here, you have a fall which is about ninety percent of state funding, state aid funding. And then you guys, schools, what's just the county has about four percent. Take that twenty percent or four percent that they have there, that's like, oh, hey, good deal. You know, they're, they're not calling anyone complaining. All of us are that are fifty percent or greater. You know, I guess it's challenging now, it's one thing when you have to call state levels that we need more funding, calling the center of order. So we've been, on error, and say, hey, what do you do? Get something going with us, give them money. The bureaucratic levels that we have to go through now to call our, the federal government, it's insane. You know, and that if you get the whole venue, they're helping to pay, they're helping to do. Please, the citizens out there, talk to them. You know, we'll get, if you have specific numbers.
Oh, we can, we can.
They had a tax number, they had a tax.
Make a note, we'll make sure we put that in our communication on Friday. We'll put their phone numbers and email addresses.
If there is nothing else, then for the order, I will call for abortions to return. All of the air to say hi. Hi, totally game.